Do you want to abstain in doing the pledge, please? Fledges.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Today is Tuesday, May thirty first, two thousand sixteen, time is six oh two. And the special meeting in Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please silence your phones. Ashley, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Darren Covington.
Here.
Jamie Kane.
Here.
Darryl Holing.
Here.
And Rieta McKenzie of Alson.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The reason we are here tonight, guys, is to talk about the wheel tax and the excise tax on the wheel. Tax to the county. State is that they are in favor of doing a fifty dollar, thirty dollar increase, which would be a hundred and fifty percent of the pay, plus then they would do a thirty percent rate increase on the wheel tax. But this year is the first year that as a city council, we can put a city tax on a vehicle, too. And what happens is with the county putting a tax on, we receive eighty percent of the road miles, which they have over six hundred, we got seventy. And then we get twenty percent of the population figured into the formula. As tonight, you will see, the formula is not really in too good a shape for the county or for the city. County looks well. I understand they have more roads, but we have just as many roads, plus we have more travel, I believe. So then there is also a, we'll have a discussion about the matching grant program for the streets that we will talk about after we kind of go through this. And whenever you want to talk about it, I did put that in a packet. I did go to NDOT last week to be in Greenfield, and I had Mark and Ron go. I was with Gary. Mark and Ron went to the Seaboard. We kind of wanted to make sure that everybody's talking the same thing. So it looked like it was pretty close. What we have is on, Mark, I'll let Mark do the rest of the talking. So we kind of went through this. Mark and I went to the county meeting, and this is what we received from them, these first few items, on how what they was going to do to the wheel tax. And the surtax.
Everybody's first to is the wheel tax. It's actually called LoHa. It's a local option highway user tax. There's two parts of it. The surtax Dan mentioned, and then there's the wheel tax on anything that's not like car, truck, or motorcycle. These are a couple of items that were prepared by a gentleman that works with the county. If you'll see, they show the total transaction, they list the transactions over there. The ones that are subject to the surtax is twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And all the rest of them down through there, I can't remember the exact number they totaled, but it's around thirty-two or thirty-three thousand. And then they show the current rate they're charging, which is twenty dollars for most of the vehicles. And then the other vehicles vary anywhere from five dollars to forty dollars. And what they are looking to do is they're going to take the majority of them, which is cars, the pickups. They're going to take those to fifty dollars. And then the other ones, they have the thirty percent raise in for closed fees. And you can see those numbers calculated over there at the side. The thing down the bottom that's interesting, they show that the total collections currently are six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for all intensive purposes. And with their increase, they would take it up to one point five million dollars for the total tax collection. And then they show you a county portion and a city portion. The confusing part about it is the city portion does not include just Greensburg. That also includes all the other incorporated communities. If you look at.
I'd be Milhous.
New Point, St. Paul, Westport, one other one.
Sardini.
Westport, St. Paul, New Point, Milhous.
There's four? Okay, we're five. Anyhow, the second page, they gave some potential ideas of what the tax will generate. They done five dollar increments for the cars and trucks and motorcycles. And then down below, they show everywhere from five to a hundred percent increase in the rates for the subjects, the vehicles subject to the wheel tax. And they tentatively have chosen the fifty dollars and the thirty dollars. Like I said, Dan and I were at the meeting. I think the one big question that I asked, I said, why are we increasing cars a hundred and fifty percent and all the other vehicles only thirty percent? And I was told, because it's only fifty cents a week roughly for the car. I didn't get an answer.
Can you repeat that because what?
Because it's only about fifty cents a week. That's what I was told. Okay. Here's the factors that they use in the formula. If you're in a county of less than fifty thousand, distribution eighty percent of it goes on mileage, twenty percent goes on population. If you're in a county that has fifty thousand plus, it suddenly changes to forty percent mileage and sixty percent population, which is a lot more friendly for the incorporated communities. And that just shows you the percentage or the amount of population in each. We're almost identical with counties, unincorporated areas, the other communities. And our mileage is seventy versus the seven hundred and forty total. What's interesting is this page. This is the current county tax numbers as they give us. And they showed those estimates on the second page. And you'll see, they get about seventy-nine percent, we get about fifteen and a half. And the other four down there get a little piece, the totals about five percent for the four of them. What's interesting, though, is if you look at the second table. Now these, we don't know the number of registrations in the city and the county. So what you've done, what I've done is I've taken the total number of registrations, divided it by the total number of population, and came up with one point three nine registration per capita. And then I've taken the average tax that's collected per registration, which is seventeen seventy-nine. When you go back and figure those based on our population, you see, we get sixteen percent, but we pay about forty-four percent. And all the other communities are treated similar, the one exception being Milhous. They're blessed because they have a very low population, but they got a lot of miles in the street relative to their size. So they actually are a gainer like Decatur County is. The next page just shows you how complicated it gets as it continues as the tax increases. This is the fifty dollars the county's proposed, along with thirty percent wheel tax increase. And at this point in time, you'll see the citizens of Greensburg get the opportunity to pay about six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in. And we get to collect about two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And you see the tax averages goes up to forty-one dollars and fifty cents. Registrations remain the same. Page six, Dan had me look at four different scenarios. These are options that the city has. What we looked at, the percentages of wheel tax increase is the very same percentage as the surtax should be on the cars. So in other words, twenty-five is twenty-five on both sides. There's no breaking down based on the various types of vehicles. Using the same registrations per capita and the population numbers, you see what each tax would generate for the city of Greensburg. Now, this money would be collected separately from the county tax. And we would receive one hundred percent of it, unless a small charge that BMB gets for being the collecting entity.
Say that last part again. It would be subtracted from what the county?
No, against the county, everybody, in other words, BMB, it's no different from the businesses that collect sales tax. They collect sales tax. And they got a thousand dollars, they have to pay, they get like a one percent or a half a percent collection fee for doing their paperwork and collecting the money. And the way this is set up, BMB actually gets a very small percentage of the money for being the collecting entity before they make distributions. The county tax is distributed to the auditor's office. The auditor then applies the LRS formula and disperses it to all of the financial officers for each of the other communities within the county. They do that monthly. This one would be collected by BMB, and the money would come directly to Ashley's office. It would not go through the county.
Okay.
And that's all I have, unless you've got specific questions.
You got any questions for Mark?
I guess the question I have, maybe I, because I don't, let's say we were to adopt the twenty dollar tax. If we were to adopt that, is that in addition to what the county will pass? I mean, they've already passed one, so it would be in addition to that, right?
Right.
So it wouldn't be, it would be a portion of that, and it would be in addition on top of that.
Right. Correct. Correct. And that's why I was kind of hoping that we might go ten dollars and then go to them and say, hey, we went ten, you go forty. I mean, they were like, oh, so go. To go in and try to see how it worked and see. Because I did ask them when I presented, you know, if they think about, let us kind of talk about it first. And it was like, no, I don't think so. So I don't know. So that's the big problem that I have, is the chance that they would go ahead and stay with the fifty and not come down to the forty. And the importance of this session is on the new, I put in your packet on the community crosses. In there that you can, the money that you raised on wheel tax, which has to be new wheel tax, has to be, can use that portion of money to go for this fifty-fifty grant on it. So we already receiving a hundred and two, so we would, you know, whatever the difference would be on that will let us know. But that's part of it goes, so if we got a hundred and fifty, we can go for a hundred and fifty, that's a grant. Now, we did receive the money. Ashley, how much did we draw?
Five hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
So from the surplus that they sent. Now, we will be able to use that this year to go to the grant. They got a grant this year. Next year, they're supposedly going to have another grant, and the next year, we understood, they'll have another grant. It's good up to a million dollars.
Possible.
Possible. It's a big, still up in the air on the projects that you have to do now. The one part of this item is, is the, that we have to have approved asset management plan made. We are in the process of doing that right now. We do have a guy that will have it done by July one. So that will give us fourteen days to get our projects together. This also will be a good benchmark for us down the road to see where our roads are and what kind of costs we're talking about in the future and how, what areas we need to address first. So we're trying to follow all these rule guidelines that they're putting up on. So and that's, the hard part is to me is knowing that they possibly could go on top.
When Mark talked about the plan last time, he said they were letting out bids. Who got the contract?
We, what was it, you got person today?
The group was Perth Group, and the gentleman we've been dealing with is Sean Strange. We received four proposals back out of the ten letters that we requested. We had one priced at around five, if you're pressed for ten, I believe. But we got four back. Two of them scored very close together. Ron and I both scored them on qualification. And the two that were really close to a prize, it just came down to first choice, seem to have a lot more experience in this particular area of expertise, so that's why they were selected. We had one that completely didn't quite understand what the project was. First off, they couldn't figure out the city of Greensburg instead of where it was. Orange County, Delta, West Side State. But anyhow, the proposal, we had seven hundred and fifty miles of roads, I mean, they just completely missed the ballpark. And then the third one didn't follow the instructions and did give us a schedule for a estimated cost per services.
How much is the contract?
Seventeen, eighteen, seventeen or eighteen. What I did was, I'm taking this out end of money, basically so that we can get this project moving. We need to, we got to have this done, even if we take a shot with our five hundred thousand we receive now. This definitely has to be done. And then, once we get that in, that'll help us, we kind of know where we're going, but we need, and I want you to use this to tell you what to do.
You had, you had mentioned that that probably would be done until August, the early's. At the last meeting, we talked about this.
Well, we pushed it, we got him under contract, and he assured us he could have it completed by July one. We might not have a final product for what we requested, in other words, cost for five years out, estimated ratings, in other words, how much we'll pay the interior rate so we can get an idea of what our cost will be. But we will have every segment of road reviewed with a rating on it. We will have our plan of attack for this season, and that's what's required from NDOT to have by July fifteenth.
So will he still do the rest of that after?
He's going to do the entire thing, but we told him, we got to make this deadline.
And so that would be approved by NDOT by July first?
It actually gets submitted to LTAP. And if it's in the format that LTAP has developed, then it is approved by NDOT.
And this guy's experience is in, he's already done since, so he's, he did the county's three years or four years ago for them at the time, so the cost was better than everybody else's. Came in, I sat down with him and talked to him, and we talked for half an hour, forty-five minutes. And so the decision was that, you know, he said he could get it done, so we need to, you know, get it done.
So part of that plan and deadline, does that include us saying, hey, these are the projects we have, we're going to focus on, here's projected costs, so we believe we're going to be able to get that portion done and submit it in, we got two weeks.
That's your, that's your plan. Now, you got to remember, this plan is, in a perfect world, if we had the money we need to address the roads we've got and to maintain them in a similar condition. In other words, there'll be more projects and more streets that need various types of preservation than we'll have done. That's just to get. In other words, every time you turn the news on, you hear about, and say, you know, we're seventy-eight billion dollars short on residence in the state of Indiana, well, every LPA, every city, town, county, we're all the same, but we all got a slice of that pie.
Part of what's going on here with NDOT, I think with the legislature, is something called gap analysis. They're wanting some better numbers about the demand and need for dollars and what dollars are being expended. Difference in those two values is the gap. And NDOT and the legislature, I believe, are trying to get a handle on how much money needs to be expended to catch up on highway maintenance.
I guess I just missed it. I thought you said that the survey was just going to show identifier roads and then maybe score it or rate it.
Each, each segment, we will break each street down, but it's big forces. It won't necessarily, it should be probably likely every block, but there could be a two-block segment. It's all done on light pavement condition. And that rating is mandatory. And whatever that rating is will determine what the plan of attack is for preservation. In other words, some of them might say, all we need to do is crack it. The next rating might say, these are the ones we need to slurp.
Well, I guess what I'm concerned about is what if we get ratings back and there's so much things to be done, we're not going to be able to do it all. So we, do we have to identify what our plan of attack is for?
Then we will narrow out based on what funds are available. Now, the part that makes it a little more difficult is we're going after match money. Hopefully, we got a few more projects this year that we could do because we're going to try to obtain this additional matching funds through the, I think it's called the Community Crossroads Program or something like that. Which is the match match, up to a million dollars. Now, they're going to be scored every community in the state, if we submit projects. A large percentage of them. They'll all be scored within the district. And then they'll go to central office. They'll all go to central office, they'll compile them, and they will make awards by August. It was interesting at the meeting, there happened to be a spreadsheet at Seaboard. There's a hundred and fifty million dollars in this current year's. Half of it goes to counties under fifty thousand, half of it goes to counties over fifty thousand. They were trying to get to smaller counties, towns within that. But the number was a little more than we thought, I believe, of sixty-four counties have less than fifty thousand. Now, if you add one community such as Greensburg in Decatur County that goes after these match monies, that's probably only a hundred and twenty-five people that could each get a million dollars, but there's only seventy-five dollars there. Or seventy-five million dollars. So in other words, not every project's going to get funded.
There will be some communities, maybe even counties, that won't submit. There'll be some that will want, let's clarify the numbers. The state will contribute up to a million, provided that that community commits a million of their own. So we can have two million dollar projects. Many of them probably will not go for the full two million because they won't have the matching capacity. But if you do the math, where are we, Mark's somewhere around six hundred thousand on average is the most you could ever get out of the state, probably. And that's a competitive matter, but they're going to do in, what, six weeks' time? They're going to evaluate all these in six weeks. That's not much.
That's what, and the first year is probably more competitive because everybody's got this one-time excess load distribution. So everybody's got some match money.
And they have to spend three quarters of that on roads.
Yes. But the problem is, in the next two years, and this is what Decatur County did with their wheel tax. You notice their gross tax was one point two million dollars for every year going forward. They're planning on having fifty dollars every year to try to get a million dollars for the match.
And it could be small projects, it doesn't have to be a large project, it could be in small projects that they could go after or we could go after. It doesn't have to be, it's like we was talking about the sealing and stuff. Basically, on that part, they, you're just paying for the material, you're not getting the labor out. The guys don't want to put it down, so they're just taking the material part. So that's where we sit.
There is a deadline of June thirtieth to use. If you raise the tax before June thirtieth, we would not realize any income until January of next year. But we can count that money towards this year's match. If we don't do anything before the end of June, that money won't be there in two thousand and seventeen, and we cannot count it towards this year's match. We can't count whatever any day you have the refund, but not the wheel tax.
So that's, I wanted to bring, try to bring all this information to you at all once. I don't know. I don't know. That's why I'm asking you guys. Know what you're thinking.
I guess I'm going to ask you to dumb it down for me, all right? Anyone else can listen if they want. What is the bottom line? What is this going to cost the taxpayer? We're talking twenty dollars if we, if we.
Well, if the county stays at fifty, it'll be seventy dollars. If the county stays at fifty and we go ten, it'd be sixty dollars. The county would go to forty, and we went ten, there, they would be fifty dollars.
You, you're already paying twenty, and if we do nothing, you're going to be paying.
By what they said.
Because of what the county's already backed.
Yes. And the problem that I'm having with the whole thing is they only went thirty percent on the wheel tax. Which I think if you're going to do one group of people, I think you need to treat everybody equal. I mean, if you're going to raise it up, then it should be treated equal, not have just the semis and stuff not paying. Because if you look in the folder, it basically shows that semis be paying less money, and they're the ones that are tearing up the roads. I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me on that part.
I agree. My, in my opinion, it's the whole thing's messed up. And what really concerns me is Indiana. The license and vehicle for the past twenty-five, thirty years has been higher than most other states. And now here we're talking about adding more on to that.
Right.
And then they, they put the carrot before your nose, and well, if you don't do this, we're not going to give you that, and so just my single opinion.
No, I think it's a good point. And I, I mean, my biggest point was, the whole thing was the fact that how much the citizens of Greensburg pays and how little of their taxes come back to them. I mean, that was probably my biggest, that's what hurts me more.
One spreadsheet in here, it says it all. Just right there. Exactly my point.
I mean, that, that's to me is where, what the problem is. And then again, you know, they, they took the cars and the vehicles and the pickup trucks and charged them fifty percent, a hundred and fifty percent. And then we're only going to do the other vehicles thirty percent? Ain't right? Come on.
And then I watched the news this morning, see our state representatives are talking about adding more gas tax on, so where does it stop?
Right. Right. I did, I have a meeting with Senator Leising coming up. I have a meeting with Representative Zinke, talking to her this week. And I also had talked to Randy Frye last week. I had talked to Tip Perfect, or Senator Perfect, and I was hoping he'd be here tonight. So, but I was hoping for him to be here so that I could understand why they gave the city the chance. This is the first time we've ever had a chance to do this. But to me, it hurts, it hurts the citizens two different ways. You know, you raise your tax, but you lose money on, on the roads. And so, you know, we have to work harder or whatever to take care of our roads, which we know, you know, they got six hundred, we got sixty. But I believe our roads would probably travel more by more people than some of their county roads. And I agree, there may be a couple out there. You know, I can name some roads right now that they probably need to address real bad. But there's a lot of roads that, that, you know, that are just not being used. I, I wanted, this is kind of an information I wanted to get your guys' opinion. I didn't look at this thing. I went to that end dot, which kind of opened my eyes up again about what's going on with them trying to supposedly give us money. We do have, you know, like I said, five-hundred thousand. And once we get this other done, so next year, we'll at least be able to use five, you know, have a million-dollar project. And then from then on, we will try to double our way up. So, you know, it wouldn't be enough, about a total of millions, five hundred and five. But when I look at what we pay in taxes, or pay on this, this tax, I, it just kind of bothers me.
Sir, are you, are we wanting to oppose it? Sir, tax will tax for purposes of raising money for the match or just to generate another revenue stream?
Basically, it'd be, be a revenue stream because of the fact that we can use that money. What, the only problem is, the money that you've raised from the wheel tax and this, and the, and the other tax is that you can only use the new part. Can't use your old money, which I didn't understand that until the other day. The old money that we have, you know, that we receive, we can't use it. Only thing we can use is something new. So they're, they're kind of putting the ball into the, our courts now to do this. So...
The idea would be if we charged an extra twenty, we leverage that to get forty dollars.
We can, yes. But could also possibly have, our citizens of Greensburg would have to pay seventy percent, or seventy dollars instead, because if the county leaves it at fifty, it would go backwards on some degree. So I, I don't know if that's a, that's a good situation, guys.
So going, I mean, going forward, what are alternatives to raising money for match aside from closing any taxes?
How else can we don't have?
Rainy day.
You can have rainy day fund, you can use new wheel tax, and you can use one-time distribution. Other than that, there's no other option. We can't use, if we've got a decent balance in our MBH, or we've got a decent balance in our local county street, none of that money is eligible for any of these grant preservation programs. I think Darrell's right. This is, they hung a big carrot out there. I think they finally recognized that, yeah, the funding for local road and streets is atrocious, and they've got to do something. But I think they also looked at it from a political perspective and said, why should we take the heat? You're getting the money, so you take the heat. I mean, that's what it really comes down to. And that was the impression you got listening to people talk in Greenfield. The whole room at Seaborn agrees the same way.
And you're like, we're just pushed back to the corner.
A little bit bad, yes.
Well, and that's the way they look at it. You want the money, then you are the one that has to put your feet to the fire to get it.
For a number of years, when local cities, towns, counties have asked the legislature for some help with road funding, pretty much the standard response had been, we all gave you the wheel tax. Fifty, sixty percent of the counties have adopted the wheel tax as all, and legislature said, if you need money to raise, you implement the wheel tax, and you're not doing it, so apparently you don't really need it, and they wouldn't do anything.
What makes it so convoluted as far as the distribution is, they use what's called the local road and street formula. That's what formula they use for this distribution. I could argue that because of the tax, gasoline taxes collected theoretically, the people live in the county, they're farther from everything, they drive farther, they put more miles on the vehicle, therefore they burn more gallons and they pay more tax. The only problem is that same formula is used on this, and this one is a user fee, it's pretty much the same for everybody. But because they use the formula that's based on the mileage, you really get penalized if you are a community and you count less than fifty thousand.
There may be an argument that there's more vehicles registered in unincorporated Decatur County that drive within the city of Greensburg than there are vehicles registered within the city of Greensburg that drive in incorporated Decatur County. Maybe, maybe, I don't have any data, this is speculation, maybe they ought to subsidize the city, not the city subsidizing the county.
But that goes back to, that's a state issue and that has to be changed by the legislature.
Something I'm not sure, Derek was asking about going forward. This program doesn't seem to have a firm lifespan. Everybody seems to think it's three years, but nobody's guaranteeing they will go beyond three years. And in fact, I don't think anybody's guaranteeing they'll leave the last three years. Is it guaranteed for three?
It's guaranteed for three.
Okay. But nothing beyond that is guaranteed.
I think the amount was less. I think that they was, that there was one guarantee.
There's a solid number for this year.
And then next year was down.
In the future years, it's based on revenue that comes from tax or sources that they're using to fund. So there's no guarantee for eighteen or nineteen. I think their intention is the way it seems. If you read the bill, it'll continue as long as the state's in good financial shape and there's surplus of money to fund the program.
Well, next year's a budget. Who would be to heart and wait and see what they do next year? What they have a little more.
Well, and, and that's kind of my feeling, but I would like to give these numbers to our legislators and say, hey, this is what you're doing to us. You're basically putting the city against the county. We don't need that anymore. We need to work as a team to grow our Decatur County.
That's right.
And that's where I think we fall apart, is that, you know, guys, we wanna do what we can for our citizens, but it seems like we're always getting overwhelmed. So I, I agree, it's, it's not gonna be any different, you know? Doing it now, I mean, it's just a later in life, but then maybe it'll change. Who knows? I mean, this is the first year for, this thing seemed to be thrown together. I mean, the projects were scrambling, and there won't be a lot of people be able to do it because they can't get that, that survey done or the inventory for the roads. And likely, we had already started on that before we do what's going on and had people already addressed this. You know, my concern was, if I waited, they may have ten people calling tomorrow so they go somewhere else. You know, wow, we gotta tie it in, and here we go. So, but that's what my feeling is on the thing.
Hard question, Derek. The only thing we lose is we lose having a revenue source for match money in there, too.
Mr. Tebby?
Yeah?
Yes, please.
I think one of the things that may be important to consider is not only the fact that you have the rev, the match possibilities, and of course, that's why the legislature did it, because no one was raising dollars locally to help for the local streets, because that was a tough decision to do. And this, the match gives, one, an excuse, a reason, and, and it serves two purposes. One, it doubles your money, in the short term at least, but in the long term, it does provide a revenue source. And that's really what is critical in this, in this thinking. I think we need to think long-term somewhat. Our, our revenues are restricted in part because of this formula, in terms of what our need is versus what we contribute and so forth. With this opportunity to create a, a city one, it does give us additional revenue on top of what this formula gives, gives us a little bit more revenue in order to handle our ongoing needs for local roads and streets in addition to the RRS distributions and so forth, or whatever else we can put in there from the general, which is also capped. You know, we also got, we also have caps there. So my thinking is, if you did do this, you have time, by doing this, you have time to ask the question again of the county. If the county refuses, meaning is unwilling to adjust theirs down to, if we did ten, let's say, and they adjusted theirs down to forty instead of fifty, our citizens would be paying the same as they would any other way. It's just that part of their, part of their tax, a greater part of their tax, would come back to the city for city roads and streets. If the county agrees, it's like Dan said, hey, we're working together to try to accomplish what we both need. If the county decides that it cannot, it has to have the full fifty or whatever amount that they, the amount that they determined now, they have to have that. There's nothing that keeps us from reconsidering and saying, well, we rescind what we just did because we don't want our citizens to have to, the county, the city to have to pay more. Or you could leave it. I mean, it's, it's up to you, but I'm just, what I'm saying is, we really do have to think long-term here in terms of a revenue stream in order to provide for the needs that our citizens expect and that we all want to provide because, you know, having maintained and proper roads and streets is a, is a critical function of the city government for the city itself. So I, I'm just saying that you might think about doing something in order to try and ask again, I guess, at, at the county level to see if we can get that kind of, of cooperation. Just a thought.
Excellent.
Do you wanna say something?
I would like to say a lot of things.
Come on.
I'm just fine right here.
Okay. Well, what's your name?
I don't want that on record. I'm Wayne Wright.
Wayne Wright. Okay.
First off, I did not see a figure, a straight figure of what, for instance, a one-hundred-dollar license plate fee is gonna become after the county's tax and the city's tax. I'm assuming it's gonna be around, what, what was a hundred dollars last year is gonna be, what, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty?
Well, you add thirty dollars basically to whatever was last year based on the county's addition. And if we were to increase it...
Plus thirty percent.
No, the thirty percent is for something other than a car or truck. It's for semis, motor haulers, trailers, everything else.
So just thirty dollars and then another twenty from you.
Well, if we do, I, I don't think we would consider more than ten.
Frankly, I think you all are just acting like a bunch of little kids and just saying they're getting more toys than we are, and you're not taking a look at what it's gonna do to your average or, or possibly impoverished citizens out here trying to, to pay fees to have a vehicle to get to work, to feed the family. Maybe an additional fifty dollars on two, two vehicles means nothing to you or to me, but on a lot of these people, now, myself, I've got four vehicles, so, you know, a couple hundred bucks, that's not gonna make me or break you, but that's, somebody who owns worth of groceries.
What, what we're saying, the additional thirty is already being approved by the county.
I know, I know.
So even if we don't, even if we do nothing, you're still gonna pay that.
That was dead wrong for the county to pass that without some kind of public hearing, I think, or at least I didn't know of it, if there was one.
There'll be an evidence. They're gonna have one.
Public hearing's bound June fourteenth.
June fourteenth? Because they need to hear a lot of things, too. Now, personally, I'm thinking, not, not because two-hundred dollars is gonna mean anything to me, but just the principle of it. I have other property, you know, I'm thinking maybe possibly setting up out of the county, a mailing address and setting up, I already got home there. I very easily registered my vehicles in another county altogether.
Right.
I could register them in my daughter's name in another county, turn them all over to her. It wouldn't matter to me a bit. And I, I would think I may strongly urge other people that can do that to do that if that all, if this all goes down because, not simply because I need the two-hundred dollars, but simply because there is no free money. You know, they, they're, they're gonna say, they're gonna give you free money. It's not free money. There is nothing free.
Right.
People out there trying to make a living are the ones that are gonna be paying for it.
We, Ron and I was talking about this afternoon, and it says, this, the people this is gonna hurt is the unemployed, the poor people.
The disability. I know, I know somebody who regards mental disability at seven-hundred and forty dollars a month. You know, what's that gonna do to them?
I mean, that's...
Yeah. We, we understand, and I think we're taking that pretty seriously, but the other side of that is we have to find a way to maintain the roads that we have.
And to do what?
Because if we can't service those roads and maintain those roads, you're gonna be here for a whole nother reason other than, hey, I, I gotta pay more. So I hear everything you're saying, and I know we all do, but we have to find a way to finance those and pay for those.
To do what? To do, like the Big Lincoln Street project, it costs millions and millions, and you can't even tell the difference driving up that street, making sidewalks look a little pretty, it's in a wider, you know, it's not three lanes.
I disagree, because I tell you what, I drove down that road every day.
It makes no difference with the traffic.
It makes such a big change. I was ever streeting Greensburg.
I'm talking about the traffic. There's no third lane, first traffic lane going up through there. It, it, it made no difference in the traffic flow.
Well, it did. It really did, and...
I disagree. I drive it every day, several times.
There used to be such a bottleneck there at school time that it was...
How did that, how did that change? There's no...
Well, a large portion of the Lincoln Street project, I know we're getting off base here. A large portion of that project was to correct the storm sewers, and there was a lot of work that you don't see that went on, that had to be done. We just kept tearing up the street, tearing up the street, so we had to do something. But again, that's off topic.
The little wall up here at the end of Lincoln Street and Highway three, the wall they built, City of Greensburg, is that city, I mean, the street department that funded that, or who funded that?
What?
The walls welcomed the...
It's part of the Lincoln Street project.
Oh, that's part of the Lincoln Street, yeah.
There again, you've got, you've got stipulations put on us by other entities that says, if we give you a million dollars, you gotta spend a certain percentage on enhancement. And then they give you a list of enhancement, and part of that enhancement was that wall that you see. Yeah, I didn't want the wall either.
Yeah.
But I wanted the rest of the money, so...
My, my thought is, you know, how many kids and sets of books would that involve kids for school?
Right.
It's a waste. Now, if, and I guarantee, if we get a million dollars in funds together and they match us another million dollars, there's not gonna be two million dollars worth of money spent on these streets here. I've been here long enough to know that, and it's not gonna happen.
Well, I hope so.
It won't happen.
Well, it needs to happen. I tell you what, our big problem, and we're talking about, talking about storm sewers, that's gonna have to be something we really... That's going to have to be something we really got to address here soon. And we're getting to the point where we can't just let the water run off into somebody's yard. And we need to start thinking about, we're going to have to start thinking about doing storm sewers in this town. You know, we had complaints all the time when people's yards filling up.
But if we had two million dollars with funds for roads in the community, that is what, twenty-six miles out of the seventy? If we resurfaced, did it all? At about, I think you said seventy, about seventy-five thousand dollars a mile?
I don't have it, I mean, seventy-seven thousand dollars a mile.
So, this is about twenty-six miles in the community out of seventy. There's no way we can have that every year. And how long are the roads going to last? So, I mean, there are things, you, you've got to...
What, what do we pay, what do we pay our county tax for, for marine, our county engine tax? Where's that going?
It doesn't go on the roads, not one penny of it.
So...
I don't know where it goes, that's why I asked.
But I appreciate your comments, though, I really do. Anybody else have anything to say?
Counsel? Any more comments?
Kind of Daryl, all this, I think. Just because you have the opportunity to raise a tax, doesn't mean you should raise a tax.
Right, I agree, that's my whole point.
Then again, the roads, the cost to maintain roads are going to go up, and the revenue stays stagnant, you're going to get behind eventually. And you probably already are behind. And the other, what I would like to see first is what comes of that plan. That's something tangible that I can look at, that I can see, this is how much we need to maintain the roads as they exist today. Not make it necessarily better, right, it was just as they are today. And then add it as part...